Thank you.
Yeah, I will take a peek at it just to refresh my memory.
Thank you again.
Are we ready? Okay, we reached out, we're ready to stand for the pledge.
My pledge to allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to accept the general flexibility.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to accept the general flexibility, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay Kurt, old business.
I only have one item of which I'm aware, and that is Kathy brought to our attention that there was another nuisance property that did not sell at tax sale. And so the address is thirty-eight ninety south eleven seventy-five east. And I believe she's landed by Jason up there, he's nodding in the affirmative. So it's something for you to think about, and if you want to pursue it, I would need authority. So I don't know anything about the property, so if you want Jason to give you some insight on it. But it would be another one of those that we would pursue like we've done recently, like up at Cedar Lake, et cetera.
What do you think Kevin? I know you had a.
Well, I was curious what we'd done on the other ones.
The other one during the process.
Process, think we'll look at it. See what we can get it up, pick it up for. Wouldn't hurt.
It has come up on the last eight tax sales and has not sold.
And it's been an issue down there in that area for a long time.
What was the address again?
It's got cleaned up.
Sorry.
No, you're good, I was just gonna.
Thirty-eight ninety south eleven seventy-five east. Eleven.
Eleven seventy-five east down by Stroh.
Yeah, I was trying to look at it.
I know the ones that we're working on up north, I think Jason's working on that to get those cleaned up here. We had to, there was somebody still living in one of them or something. So. You think so Pete?
I mean, I know there's some down, I couldn't pull it up, but I know there's some down there that need to be.
I mean, you can go look at it too and decide in another meeting, just Kathy just brought it to our attention because it just went through the most, most recent tax sale.
Eight times it's been through and nobody's.
Eight times and nobody's purchased it, and nobody's living in it, are they Jason?
I did go down there. I did go down there and evaluate it, many years ago, somebody thought about buying it because it was already gutted. The inside of it was just falling apart, the backside of the house, the roof is gone.
That's why it's covered in a tarp.
On the backside part of it, tarp's gone now, it's just open roof. They initially, many, many years ago was gonna flip it and sell it, and they gutted it and they just walked away from it, so it's sitting there in shambles now, so. Yeah, it'd be a good one to move forward also.
I'm okay with it, I know there were some properties down there that were in very rough shape, so.
Something up.
Yep.
We just need a motion to have Kurt's office.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to have Kurt's office proceed with claiming that off a tax sale. Thirty-eight seventy?
Oh, sorry.
Thirty-eight ninety south eleven fifty east.
Eleven seventy.
Eleven seventy-five east, I'm close.
And it's close enough.
I suppose they wanted exact, but yes, the exact one you have on the paper.
Second. We have a motion, a second to have Kurt's office work on the property located at thirty-eight ninety south eleven seventy-five east. See if we can't get that place cleaned up too, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all I have, thank you.
Twenty half.
On that, yeah, I have input if you need it on other items on your agenda, but yeah.
Okay, I'm planning and zoning rezone petitions Robbie.
Good morning, I have three rezone petitions this morning for you. The first one is twenty twenty-five dash ten dash fourteen dash A, it's for Dwayne and Marlene Chup or E and S Sales. The application was to rezone approximately an acre and a half from the A two to B three. So they're doing a big project over there, we've already rezoned partial of the property to B three. Through this project, they needed some more space, so they've asked to have another acre and a half rezoned. The plan commission gave it a favorable recommendation.
Is that where they're putting up the big?
Yes.
Storage, okay.
I make motion to approve the Dwayne and Marlene Chup.
There's the.
Second.
The motion, second to approve the rezone, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
The next one I have is twenty twenty-five dash ten dash fourteen dash B, it's for Paul and Darlene Miller. It's the southern portion of the address, twenty ninety west fifty north Lagrange. They're asking to have approximately twenty-five acres rezoned from A two to I one. This is the Miller lumber up on one hundred north, three hundred west. So he'd like to move his business to US twenty. The plan commission also gave us a favorable recommendation.
That's right there next to pipeline properties.
Correct.
Yeah.
There's the ordinance you want it.
They're gonna have issues with that being I zone if the pipes going through there?
No, they have, on the rezone flat, their survey, they show that where there's the easement, they believe they have room to still develop.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance of zoning the map, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten dash twenty B. Yeah.
Second. The motion, second to approve the ordinance for the rezone, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The third one I have is twenty twenty-five dash ten dash fourteen dash C. This is property located north of twenty-five seventy-five north state road nine Lagrange, it's approximately twenty-nine acres. Petitioner asked to have it rezoned from B three to A two. This property was given an unfavorable recommendation by the plan commission.
We're not, we already had a public comment on this, so we're gonna, we got, we got some things we're gonna talk about here, so.
I make motion to table this for further review and consideration.
I'll second it.
We have motion, a second to table this rezone. For further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I'll give you the afterlist Jeff. Okay.
Sign anything on this one please.
No, that one's tabled, so.
Give it back to me. I didn't know you're, oh no, I'm sorry.
I'm the unsigned one here Kathy, this is.
Next we have Treasure Department, Connie.
Good morning. I would like to declare our postage machine as surplus, it was a Pitney Bowes. It's obsolete and it quit working, so I've since replaced it with just a regular scale because we never used the postage aspect of it, we just used it as a scale. So I would like to have that as surplus.
Make a motion allow the treasure to declare her list of items surplus.
Second.
The motion, second to allow the treasurer's office to surplus that was a postage meter of some sort. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, also, I would like, we discussed the bankruptcy claim. Whether we want the attorney's office to proceed filing a claim on that. For the amount that is currently owed, I would recommend on this particular one that we not file a claim on it.
That sounds good to me.
I mean, if it's not gonna.
Does he need a motion or a spend?
Do you have a cause number or anything on this one?
I do in the office, I can get that to you.
Cost more attorney fees.
Yeah. I'd make a motion to, with her opinion, not file on this one.
Second. The motion, second to not file a claim for the property or any questions that the treasurer's office is talking about, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. EMA Director Bill.
I just need a approval for Terry to sign the renewal for the software subscription for our large programmable sign that we use, highway department uses. Included in the first year, now it's, so you can pay nine hundred and fifty dollars a year, or they have discounted rates. If you do a twenty-four month renewal, you save ten percent, if you do a thirty-six month renewal, you save fifteen percent, so. Either way.
Which one do you want to do?
I'm good with any of them. I can find the money for any of them, budget wise, if you want to do it year by year, I mean, we can budget for that, obviously easier than every three years, but.
This is something you think you'll continue?
Oh yeah. I have found a lot of different things we can use this sign for, so.
Do you have a cost for two year and three year then?
Two year would be seventeen hundred and ten dollars, and the three year would be twenty-four twenty-two fifty.
I see it's about four hundred bucks, three year.
Three year.
I make a motion to the subscription for grant, program we'll sign for a three year subscription. I'm getting it out.
Yeah, okay. Second.
We have motion, a second for this, do I need a different one of these because it says nine, nine fifty on this one?
No, because at the top it's got the numbers on it if you do the three year, so just signing that, then I can, I'll send him.
Okay, all right, we have motion, a second to approve a three year agreement with all traffic for the sign for twenty-four twenty-two fifty, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Bill, before you go, if we happen to get another one of those or more of those, does this, will that program work for all three of them or is it per sign?
Honestly, I don't know, I mean, this just gives us the access, I would think, maybe it'll collude other signs because it's just the access to the website so that we can program it on a go, so. And you can add signs I know on the website.
Yeah, just.
I couldn't tell you for sure, I never asked that.
So if we're gonna get more, we should get it while we're under this contract.
It's only gonna go up.
We don't sign this one because we tabled it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I gave it to him and he signed, I'm just curious, I think we had to, so, all right. Assessor.
Morning. We just had one reassessment bid from Nexus Group Incorporated. They've been working with us, I believe since twenty fourteen, doing an excellent job, contract has been reviewed by the attorney. And we'd like to award the contract to the Nexus Group. We anticipated they'd come in at about ten percent over the last contract, but it ended up being about eight percent.
I can give you a little bit of input, I might agree with Kim, basically what you're looking to do is award to the Nexus Group Inc. And then there's a form, state form fifty-five nine thirty, that needs to prove and signed by all three of you. I have it here, I'm sure she has it too, available for you, so I just want to make sure the total cost for purposes of your knowledge is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, but the way I read it, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand or one hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred per year.
That's correct, yes.
Come out with six hundred and ninety-two thousand, just so that you know. And they made the changes that we asked, in terms of how Nexus did, how it was, contract was filled out, so. It is ready for you to consider and prove as long as, I'm sure she does have the money appropriated, so. Hand that to Kevin.
So this must have some kind of a increase in it every year then, because it's, one eighty-seven is not, multiplied by three is not seven fifty, right? Right, okay, just making sure.
You're okay with this Kevin, everything?
Yes, sir.
At least all three of us get to sign it.
Actually, well, I didn't see a signature. Yeah, I want to check, I thought it was for, I just want to double check, yeah, it's for the years twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. Yes, it's for four, because when you said three.
Yeah.
It's a four year contract, it starts January, sorry, actually starts May one, their physical inspection. Apologize for any confusion. Yeah, it's actually for those four years.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, it didn't sound right to me either.
Just. Yeah, all right, I'll make a motion to approve the contract for annual adjustments and cyclical reassessment through the Nexus Group.
Second. The motion, a second to approve the contract with Nexus Group for four years, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Thanks.
Somebody be signing this somewhere, right?
There should be a spot in the middle, and it's kind of a weird form.
There it is, yep.
Later, I have to keep it and scan it and then I'll get it to you.
Okay. Council on Aging, Sherry out there somewhere? Oh, she's hiding way back there in the back.
Hi.
Hi. Morning.
Um, well, first of all, I'll have to have, I just got an email from them, they need to correct something on my claim, so. We'll have to have it signed again outside of the meeting, if that's okay. What?
By the president, right?
Yeah, by the president, yeah. Um, I did submit it, but last time we, when we had our van totaled, I put it under the wrong amount, I wasn't supposed to put it there. And so now it has to get corrected, and I can't do it because I'm not in. Anyway, so I will have that hopefully today.
Said so you can make the mistake, but you can't fix it.
Yeah. And he made a point at our conference to tell everybody, if this happens, don't be like Sherry and put it in this line. I didn't know, geez. But anyway.
So, so I'll make a motion to approve the claim, once it's adjusted, to be signed outside a public meeting by the president.
Second. The motion, a second to approve the claim and have the president sign it outside a meeting when it's, the problem's fixed.
Well, that would be me, so.
Motion carries.
Um, Kevin, I did contract, yes.
Oh, you did?
Yep, so November first through February is two oh eight. That's without tax, and then March to August is two twenty-one.
Thank you.
I didn't want to like go further than that because I thought that was too whatever.
Good move, thank you.
Do you want me to tell you my numbers? Since I'm supposed to do this anyway. And we talked with Endot about regionalization with Noble, and because all these changes just happened there. At Endot came up here, as of right now, it's staying the way it is, we're going to, I offered to assist them do the claim because they don't have anybody that knows how to do that. So between Endot and myself, we will help them, but they have enough drivers to still operate. So as of now, it's staying the same.
Okay, cool, some stuff for, some of the drivers came back, correct?
Yes.
They rounded two, and they've got.
Now they have like fourteen.
Okay, and they got rid of the top three people.
Correct.
That's what's going on in Noble County.
I still see them up there driving around.
Yeah, well, they bring people up here to the hospital and.
I mean, that's by me, the northwest part of the county.
Yeah, well, they go to Day Springs too, over there, I know that, but I don't know. Anyway, they have major changes that happened. But we did do nine thousand six hundred ninety-nine trips, and that was a hundred and thirteen, eight hundred and forty-three thousand miles. And then the passenger fares that we collected on the vehicle was seventy-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight. And like I told Kevin the other day, we were talking about all this, like ours is still the very highest in all, the whole state. Because most of the people pay. So that was total operating expenses for the third quarter, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. But, and we only denied eighty-four people. Within the county.
Nice job.
You're doing a great job out there Sherry, except for the little mistake that you made for, I have to sign outside the meeting now, so, but that's okay.
I know, sorry, I'll try and do better, thank you.
We still got the highway engineer.
Um, I am asking to have the financial commitment letter for Community Crossings Grant twenty twenty-six dash one signed outside of a meeting. I'm still running numbers, the grant is due on the thirty-first of this month.
Your match is coming from where?
I believe it was Ed.
It's already been approved?
Yeah, through council. As long as I get it awarded this year.
What's the chances of getting those grants since they've changed the rules and that?
I have all the requirements done.
I'm just, I'm just curious to see how.
Well, it's, it sounded like, it sounded like Community Crossings was gonna stay the same for this round. And then going the next one, starting next June, when, when does it open?
Um, it'll be July.
July.
Yeah.
Starting in that one is when they're making all the changes to it.
It's a funny opening, you're supposed to have all your ADA documents though updated before you can apply for this one, which we did. Yes. But then, the rest of it's mainly stuff we already had.
What, what project is this one?
This is seventy-five north, two hundred north and two fifty west. Seven point two five miles total.
You're working on road seventy-five north, two hundred north and two fifty west?
Yes.
Okay.
So we need, you need a motion for the financial commitment, right?
From the president to sign outside a meeting.
Yes.
I think I can make that one, I'll make a motion to for the financial commitment for Community Crossings Grant, and have the president sign outside a, a public meeting.
Second. We have motion, a second to apply for the Community Crossing Grant, and have the president sign, sign outside a meeting, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
And then also, retroactive the agreement with Endot for the construction and engineering for twenty-four oh one five thirty-seven, which is our pavement markings contract that we have with them. Which is a HSIP fund grant, Terry signed it on ten fifteen.
Make a motion to approve that.
Second. Motion, a second to approve the.
Sir, data needs to be from ten fifteen.
From ten.
Retro.
Retroactive.
To ten fifteen.
Yeah.
To ten fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
He signed a docu-sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, and she keeps sending to me, so. That's why I'm just, I checked with her and she says I can sign it, I signed it, so. Jumped the gun. We have motion, a second to approve the signing of the contract retroactive back to October fifteenth, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks.
Contract amount.
Contract doesn't end up. I can get it to you.
Thank you.
Morning. Jason's got the estimates of the damage, the holes in the highway department from the accident.
Traffic accident down there, some traffic, put grass through through the building.
Sounds like it worked.
I did solicit three, I got two back, and the top one is the one I would recommend to go with, and that cost will be eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the repair. Basically, that section that guy hit, they're gonna cut out at the corners and replace it with cinder block.
So, how big a hole was it?
Front end of a Dodge, the problem was there was a center core with cinder block that had been replaced over the years, that's stronger than the rest of the wall, they hit the edge of that and it caused, caused the whole side of the wall to be shifted, so we have to cut the whole section out, so.
So Kathy, if the quote comes in less than our deductible, are we even turning it in?
We've already, the insurance companies made us aware of this, we just have to pay this.
Okay, I was gonna say, because that's, yeah.
We notify them because we don't know at the beginning.
Right, 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 that's why I was just questioning, because I'm like.
Yeah, unless it goes over that threshold, you just cut it check for.
Yeah.
We're gonna take this at a Q cap. Cap rowlessly.
Capital, yeah.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to have the repairs made by Shetland Construction for eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars to the highway building.
Second. We have motion, a second to approve the Shetland Construction Company to fix the hole in the wall down at the highway department and have the money come out of the Q cap fund, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
I'm assuming that means this driver had no insurance?
Uh, that I do not know.
They can go seek them for reimbursement.
That's, yeah, yeah, that's.
If we get reimbursed, great, the money will go back into Q cap.
So the insurance company will handle that into it, or we have to handle that into it?
Usually the insurance company will go after.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Al, can you do it in five minutes or not? Can you do it in five minutes or not?
No.
Okay. Then we won't have you come up here then. Accounts payable?
If they outstanding, look good to me, make motion to approve.
Second.
The motion, a second to approve accounts payable, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Minutes from October sixth, twenty twenty-five.
I didn't see any changes to it. I didn't see any changes to it.
No.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. The motion, a second to approve the minutes from October sixth, twenty twenty-five, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Memorandum from a regular meeting on October twelfth and executive session on October fifteenth.
Motion to approve memorandum from executive meeting, and also the official meeting.
Second.
The motion, a second to approve the memorandum, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we got a little recess till nine o'clock to our bid opening. Yeah, you can.
Um, and I don't know if this would be to Kevin or Aaron, I was, someone asked me about the compost site, they want to know whether they can bring household food to be, to put in. No, okay, I didn't, I didn't know the answer to that, so.
Grass, leaves, twigs, logs.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that we, get that out to the public that we're not accepting food waste.
Somebody called me on that too, and I says, no, we're not, we're not dumping food out there, that's like, that would be really smelly.
Well, we'd have lots of raccoons. Yep, I just want to make sure publicly that everybody knew, so.
Okay, we're gonna pause.
We're gonna pause till, till nine o'clock.
Okay. Kim, can I get your signature on this one?
There's the bell.
Nine o'clock, so. Yeah, wait on Kathy.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm back.
Back, all right. Material quotes for Material quotes for highway department. Aaron, it's all you.
All right, I'm going to, um, I'm gonna ask that we accept all these prices, uh, now for the materials for twenty-twenty, or excuse me, um, take them under advisement. Uh, now for twenty-twenty-six, um, we'll go through each one and then we'll open them back there and let, uh, people view prices if they wanna see what others bid. Um, asphalt materials for requisition, item number four. Pearson Trucking for item number four. Clint Group for item number four. Pulvers and Sons, um, item number five. Brooks Construction for item number five. Niblock, uh, for item number five. API, um, for item number five. Pulvers and Son Asphalt, item number six. Brooks Construction, um, item number six. Niblock, item number six. API, item number six. Clifford Aggregate, item seven. IMI Irving Materials, item number seven. Clifford Aggregate, item seven A. Alcart County Gravel, item seven A. Stone Coat Company, item seven A. Uh, Wolf Lake Gravel Incorporated, item seven A. Host Hattler Farms, item seven A. Host Hattler Farms again, item seven A. Uh, Civil Con for item, uh, item eight. Great Lakes Chloride, item ten. Saint Regis, um, Clover Incorporated, item eight. R Mark Company, item eleven. Clifford Aggregate, item twenty-six. Brooks Construction, item twenty-six. Host Hattler Farms, item twenty-six. Two of those, uh, so Host Hattler Farms again for item twenty-six. Um, Treated Timber, Treated Bridge Timber, uh, Company, item twenty-seven C.
Is that American Timber Bridge?
Yes, that's correct, um, yeah. All right. Got a couple more. Lightstone, um, they are for item seven and seven A. And the last one. Young Family Farms for item twenty-six.
Quick question, did you have, for the very first one, number four, did you have asphalt materials?
That's correct, yeah.
I missed that one.
Yeah, they were the very first one. That's it. Kathy, uh, get these back to you first thing this afternoon, is that okay?
On penalties.
All right. Thank you.
The motion, Katie's on advisement.
Motion, Katie, excuse me, motion to take material quotes under advisement.
Second.
The motion to second to take the material quotes under advisement, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Okay. You have anything?
Nothing else.
Kevin? Oh, that's right.
Alan, we skipped.
We almost skipped Alan. Moving up, Alan. Morning.
Morning. I got a handout. Well, good morning, I'm here this morning to give you an update on the state of the veterans community in LaGrange County, and I can tell you it's past year has been good in terms of this office assisting veterans and surviving spouses and children and receiving the benefits they're entitled to. I wanna start out by talking about the veteran population trends in LaGrange County. I have two sources of information. Uh, the one that we've historically, uh, talked about is, uh, the VA, uh, report, the, the GDX report. Uh, they say we have, uh, one thousand fifty-one veterans here. This is, these are twenty-twenty-four numbers, they just released them October first. But they say LaGrange County has a thousand fifty-one veterans as opposed to twelve hundred and seventy-one in two thousand twenty-three. Then, IDVA, the Department of Veterans Affairs, on their website, they say we only have one thousand twenty-seven veterans, couple dozen less, but I think these are more recent figures. They break it down, we have nine hundred and ninety-nine male veterans and twenty-eight female veterans. Uh, the one thing I want you to pay attention to is seventy-five and a half percent of, of our veterans here in LaGrange County are over the age of sixty-five. Uh, I kinda, I think that kinda plays into why we had such a, you know, a twenty percent decrease in the veteran population over a one-year period. Uh, so, excuse me. We have a total of two hundred and fifty-two veterans under the age of sixty-five. So, our veteran population is really old, and if you look at it in terms of what it is in surrounding counties, we are really, really old compared to other counties. And to tell you a little bit about where we're going, IDVA says that, uh, and I, I find this hard to believe, but they say we only have six active-duty veterans calling LaGrange County their home of residence. No, that's six, and I know that, uh, we have veterans that went in from LaGrange County, they're still serving, that no longer call LaGrange County their home of record for tax or other purposes, I'm not sure they move. Um, we also have nineteen reservists and twenty National Guardsmen. So, despite a twenty percent decrease in veteran numbers, we were able to generate, uh, twelve million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars in tax-free federal compensation pension and medical care benefits for these veterans. Their spouses and children. This is, this number is eighty thousand dollars short of the two thousand twenty-three. But in terms of, we lost a lot of veterans. Um, I, I look back and, uh, the year before I accepted this position, two thousand and one, we had two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three veterans, so we've got less than half the veterans we had twenty-five years ago. And, uh, the total compensation coming into LaGrange County was, uh, one million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nine. Of course, two thousand and one dollars are worth about a dollar eighty-three cents in today's market, but still, I think we had a significant increase. And we still have, uh, pretty much the same state benefits, uh, the biggest one, uh, is remission tuition fees for Purple Heart Veteran Children, wartime disabled veterans, children. Uh, that's the biggest one, we have Military Family Relief Fund that IDVA, uh, funds with, uh, veteran license plate sales. So it's veterans helping veterans there, so. Uh, I'd like to, uh, look forward a little bit, going forward, last year we talked about the Hamilton County versus IDVA lawsuit uh, charging IDVA with, uh, derelict in a duty, I guess, failure to train and supervise CBSOs. Of course, the rule in favor of Hamilton County and, uh, IDVA appealed it. And, uh, according to field decision, it was handed down in March of this year, upheld the earlier ruling. Uh, that was a big deal because WRTV investigates, obtaining eternal, eternal email estimating twelve to twenty-five hundred veterans were negatively affected with the projected loss to families of forty-five million dollars over that five-year period. Sounds like an impossible number, well, you break it down by the, by the year, and then you consider that Hamilton County has about fourteen thousand veterans during that period of time, it's not so big. Okay, I told you, I think last year there was gonna be a legislative response to this. Uh, that Senate Bill four thirty-three, and I gave you a copy of that. And, uh, I'll just say that, uh, I'm a member of a committee along with, uh, association president, media past president, uh, the, uh, commission, IDVA commission member representing our association and a gal from Morgan County. We've been meeting with IDVA personnel trying to, uh, come to some common ground on what standards will be required. Uh, IDVA is gonna bring, uh, their recommend, recommendations to the IDVA Commission October twenty-ninth, that's just a week away. Uh, these, the standards that they approve will be effective January first, which is only a little over two months away. And I kinda wanted to, uh, go through some of the things that we've been talking about. If you go to the second page of, uh, the Senate Bill in, uh, section three, art, uh, item five, it says not later than January first, establish standards for accreditation under section ten of this chapter for state, county, and city service officers. A big part of our conversation, we met, uh, we met Friday. A big part of that conversation was about, uh, standardizing office hours for, uh, for every veteran service office, county veteran service office. And, uh, like someplace I got what they wanna do here, but they want every service office, every county service office to be open all the hours, let the, let the buildings open, in other words, if, if a clerk's office is open, they want us to be open. We push back really hard on that because, uh, there's a lot of counties like LaGrange County and, and a number of them that have even smaller veteran populations. So, uh, I, I don't know whether we convinced them or not. But, uh, they say they've been, uh, communicating with your, your state association, so I don't know what kind of uh, information you're getting from them.
Haven't heard anything or seen anything from, you know, this, this has been news to us when you brought it to our attention, it doesn't, yeah.
Yeah, well, let me find, uh.
Where's this push coming from now, is it coming from the big counties down around Indianapolis or?
No, it's coming from, uh, the first, uh, up until two thousand thirteen, the, the IDVA had eight employees down there, now they've got like forty, I mean, they've really grown their department. Uh, so it's coming from IDVA, it's not coming from the counties. The county, the big counties don't care what we do, I mean, they've, they're full-time, you know, of course, but. Uh, but we've got all the way from four hundred and some veterans in a county to four, over forty thousand, so you, it's not one size fits all. Um, as far as the rest of the accreditation standards, uh, you know, they don't impact us, cause I've been an accredited representative for uh, a long time.
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, some of the counties don't have that, they're gonna have to get in line, they're gonna have to get a PIV card so that they can see the veterans' files, et cetera. Um, so, uh, the, um, one of the things they told us Friday was that, that they're going to hire a national organization to conduct our training. And, uh, in this, in this legislation, on the next page, it says, and again, that's section four, paragraph five, it says to prepare and conduct service officer training schools with the voluntary aid and assistance to the veteran service staffs of the major veterans organizations. So they're gonna bypass those, they're not gonna, they're not gonna use them apparently. Uh, here's a, here's another one on, item seven. It's in boldface there, to conduct or select a designated to conduct biannual public meetings with the executive of each county to provide necessary information regarding outstanding claims and answer questions from veterans. Uh, and those meetings are subject to notice requirements. I, I guess that's just a, a forum so that a disgrunt, can, veteran can complain about what I've told them or something, I don't know, but I, I don't, you know, that doesn't, it's a big deal to me, but. I don't really like the, uh, the, on page four talks about veteran service officers, who can be one, what your qualifications are. And they've opened up the back door to let non-veterans become service officers. Uh, and in addition to that, you know, they have, it sounds like they're encouraging nepotism to me.
Why would you want a non-veteran to be a service officer? That makes no sense to me.
It makes no sense to us either.
You have a friend that needs a job.
So maybe somebody down there at IDVA has somebody that they want to be qualified for that job. So I just, I know that most of your focus has probably been on Senate Bill one, ramifications that it has for the county, but this is just a little sidebar, but it is important to the veterans community, so.
Yeah, and it's also gonna, you know, it's gonna make the counties have a full-time person in there, one who really don't need a full.
Well, we're, we're hoping that they'll, that they're gonna back off and that what we tell them is let's just, let's just make sure that the county service officers are accredited, and to be accredited, you have to work a thousand hours a year, which is twenty hours a week, basically. Uh, but we're, we're okay with that. But, uh.
Especially for counties like us.
Yeah, you know, I, I guess I'd have to try to learn how to knit or something, you know, if I had to be in that office full-time, I, I don't know, but. I'm fine too.
We could always put you to work with Jason or Zach.
Back to training, um, they told us Friday that, uh, this national organization is gonna come in and do the training, it's gonna be a four-day training period. They're also gonna have a day in the spring and a day in the fall as well as, uh, four just quarterly, uh, quarterly training by the district service officers. So, um, I might have a budgetary concern. Uh, when I, in two thousand and two, the, you know, the training budget was, uh, fifteen hundred dollars a year, and I reduced that to twelve hundred because they, uh, decreased the, the training to the point where I wasn't utilizing all that money. But, um, I just look and, uh, in two thousand and two, gas was about a dollar thirty-eight a gallon, the average Indianapolis, uh, area hotel rate was eighty-five dollars, well, that's not the case anymore, so, uh, I'm sure I'm gonna probably run out of money.
We can, we can.
Campus.
I'm sure we can figure out something.
Well. You know, like I say, uh, they're gonna vote on this the twenty-ninth, we'll know what they're gonna, the submission is going to require.
We'll have two months to implement it, right?
Pardon?
Have two months to get it implemented before the first of the year.
Well, the law says, you know, and there's, we have, uh, we have service officers here in our northeast district that do not, they're not accredited. They don't have a PIV card, they, you know, they don't want to get one, so it's just like day and night having that, so. So anyway, uh, is there, uh, any questions about any of this?
No, I just think, I think for what you're doing, Al, you're doing a good job for us and, and that, so we'll, we'll get through this.
Evidently, you're doing too good.
Yeah, well, I hope it comes out, you know, I hope that, uh, things work out so that, uh, we can continue like we are, I think we're doing a good job.
You know, just let us know how the vote goes.
Yeah, I will.
Find out.
Yeah, uh, I don't know, uh, there, there are some legislators on the commission, but they're non-voting members for the most part. Uh, there's two house, two, uh, representatives and two senators on that, that sit on that commission, but they're non-voting. Each of the, each of the veteran service organizations has a representative, although the DAV doesn't at this point, I'm not sure why, there's a, there's a citizen veteran on that committee now, so. I'll be lobbying my American Legion guy pretty hard on this, so, and we got our association guy on board, so he's gonna be doing the same thing, so. I just want to thank you all for the support that you've given the service officer over the years. You know, when I started, there was no office.
No, there wasn't.
I got a cardboard box with a few file folders and some forms in it, met people at the American Legion, this is, this office has really increased the visibility, and I think it's a big part of why our, we're able to do more for the veterans, and they're where we're here and what we do.
Thanks, Al. Is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have motion second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.